Call to order and establish a quorum on Thursday, January sixteenth at seven P M. Little call. Jan?
Here.
Amy?
Here.
I'm here. Deisha?
Here.
Dana's not here. Russell?
Here.
Will y'all please join us for the pledges?
I pledge pledges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Mr. Egan, will you lead us in prayer here tonight?
Glad to. Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, we come before thee this evening with open hearts and minds. We pray that thou bless us with thy holy spirit, that we'll be able to accomplish good work tonight in our community, and that we would be able to do things that are pleasing unto thee. We are grateful for this beautiful community and the wonderful people that reside here. We pray that thy hand will be upon them and bless them in all of their doing. We pray for these things, Jesus Christ, in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. We're moving to mayor announcements. January twentieth is Martin Luther King Day, and City Hall will be closed. Feeding Fannin will be on February fourth. Applications to be put on the ballot for may elections are open from January fifteenth until February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Applications can be made at City Hall. There are three seats on the city council open. Next regular meeting will be held on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Citizens comments. Bill Duffy, microphone system.
Hello? Okay, how do I?
You might have to pick it up. It's, yeah.
Hello, okay. There must be.
A button?
Yeah, sorry, turn the mic down. There you go.
My name is Bill Duffy. I live here in Ladonia. I like to talk this evening about the new sound system. I like to call everyone's attention to the fact that this equipment was donated by the Chamber of Commerce. Based on their fundraising activities throughout the years, we've developed funds, and we try and do things that are worthwhile throughout the community. It's, I think it's important to note, and also I'd like to point out that I'm just speaking for myself. Not, and it's based on my knowledge and understanding of information. But this sound system costs approximately five thousand dollars, which the Chamber of Commerce raised and donated to the city. Now, it's a shame that there's some people, for whatever reason, in this town do not appreciate our efforts, their efforts. We're amateurs. We do the best we can. And I just think it's important to acknowledge the fact that no matter how you slice it and dice it, this is a non-bad thing that was done. Also, I'd like to comment that one of the main fundraisers we have during the year is the Twenty Mile Garage Sale and Market on the Square. Now, that, twice a year, it generates approximately five hundred dollars each time. So what this means is that we gave six years' worth of that revenue to the city in the form of this microphone system. And I think that's important to acknowledge, especially when you remember last year, during the winter, the people who controlled the city council essentially went after the chamber because they spent a lot of time and wasted a lot of money on ordinances and things that they wanted to charge. You have to have a permit. Maybe that's a good thing, but to charge for it when they were going to get the money back anyway? I think there's a lot of short-sighted people in this community, and it's just a shame. Because along with these things, I'd like to point out that instead of balancing the checkbook, passing a budget, completing an audit, and reviewing expiring contracts, they chose to go after an organization in the town that again only tries to do good. Along with these things, the chamber donated twenty-eight hundred dollars for benches. By the way, these are the metal benches, which I noticed people really enjoy sitting on, as opposed to the old wooden ones in town. Two thousand dollars for the, for new electric. And the group also has purchased all the Christmas decorations. They put them up and take them down, which I know we still need to take them down for this year. But I'd just like to point out the things that, again, maybe if people would get on the bandwagon and help out, and maybe have some constructive criticism and work, we could move forward in this town. Again, we're not looking to make another plan. We just want to prevent another bug tussle. And I'm afraid that what we have are some people in this community that are trying very hard to return to a place that no longer exists. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Moving on to administrative agenda, minutes of December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Russell?
Excuse me, you don't have to approve each item. When we get to the last item, then we'll approve all of them at one time. So if there's any discussion or any questions about the minutes, then let's have that. But if nobody sees any problem, we'll move on to the accounts payable.
I'd rather keep doing each one.
It's not each one.
Well, it's not listed as a consent agenda. Otherwise, I would suggest that. But yeah. I think we have, we're required to consider them individually unless it's listed as a consent items. So there's a motion for the approval of the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
We move to approve the minutes from December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Move to accounts payable for January twenty-fifth, January twenty-twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things I noticed on here. Can you give some color around the IRS payment, nine hundred forty dollars and forty-five cents?
Give me one second. Let me find.
You want me to stand?
Yeah.
Those penalties and fees for taxes that were not paid in twenty-three. Reports were not sent in.
Is payroll taxes?
Payroll taxes, yes.
I'd just like to point out, that's a thousand, that's a thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Based on penalties and fees for not doing what we're required to do as an employer.
Yes.
In twenty twenty-three.
Another item on the agenda similar.
Okay.
Is that the retirement?
No.
No, you're right.
Railroad commission. In the water budget, there's the railroad commission.
Oh, sorry. There you go, I was still listening.
Okay.
And penalty.
So could you give some color behind that one?
I can. In February of twenty-four, the waterworks person broke a gas line. He reported the line break at the time to Atmos, but the railroad commission follow-up report was never done. Because of that, we have a five thousand five hundred dollar penalty. It has to be paid by February sixth.
And again, that was in February of twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
So on our payables report tonight, we have five, sorry, six thousand five hundred dollars worth of penalties and fees as a result of prior councils either unwillingness or inability to follow the rules.
Yes, sir.
How much we can do about that? I make a motion that we approve the accounts payable for January twenty-twenty-five.
All in favor?
Aye.
We move to pass accounts payable for January twenty-twenty-five. Moving on to financial report for December twenty twenty-four.
So in context of what we're looking at here, again, we haven't had an audit completed. Is the audit in process yet?
Yes, I got the final paperwork from them this week, or the end of last week, and it'll be sent back. Actually, I'm planning on sending it back to them tomorrow. Justin signed off on it for me.
So as has been our practice, since we don't have a good baseline for financials since the beginning of twenty twenty-four, by the earliest, is that you?
I think so.
Okay.
I'll just speak loudly.
Apologies, we're just, we're beta testing the system. We're trying to tune it. I make a motion that we table the financial report for twenty twenty-four pending the audit.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We move to information reports. Section Alpha Utility slash Public Works Department.
There's a written report. If you'd like, I'll somewhere else it for you.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
They've been working on several, they're still cleaning up the water, I'm sorry. They're still cleaning up the water and sewer plants. There's been just a lot of stuff that has been left to go for a long time. They've worked on two big water leaks and another big sewer leak, and have gotten those repaired. They've shut off three accounts. They did a couple of locates for prospective home buyers. They've helped two residents check their water for leaks after this last cold spell and did the general stuff. They've changed out three water meters. One of those included having to redo the total service line. They continue working on well one. We sent the back T test off this week and waiting on the results. We should have them by tomorrow. If that comes back clear, then we can put well one back online. If not, we'll have to test it again next week and try and get it where it will pass again. We've got the dual scales, and they'll be installed at well one when it comes back online. And they've been working on the roads. I don't know if y'all have noticed, but they've done some smoothing out on Main Street and some other intersections that were the worst. As they come across them, they're working on them as much as they can with what they have to try and make them a little bit more passable until we can get the materials that they need. The radiometers have been ordered, and we're waiting for those to come in. They had put the Christmas lights up and then took them back down. Well two continues to have problems, and they're still trying to sort out what's going on with that. During the bad cold spells, Kayla pretty much babysat that thing all week and long to make sure that it didn't go down, and he'll do the same during this next cold spell to make sure we don't have water outage. We need to look at getting the generators up and running at both of the wells for backup. They're working on the tractor. The fuel tank's replaced. The front line's been replaced. Working on getting the hydraulics done now. And they've been checking out the police vehicles. We've had problem finding batteries because there are specific battery that not everybody carries. And I believe they found a distributor this week, but they haven't had a chance to go and get them and put them on there to see what's going on with the police cars. And today, they started yesterday working on the bad leak at Keenan Richards. They worked on it till ten o'clock last night, and they've been back today. And they've been on it all day, and they'll be back Monday. They're having trouble. There's a lot of valves that they have not been able to find, so they don't want to shut the whole town down. So they're trying to find the valves that affect that area so that it can shut just that area down. And that's been proven to be a bit of a challenge.
Thank you, Ms. Lisa. Moving on to section Bravo, Volunteer Fire Department.
Brady sent us a report.
Yes, I can hear.
Go ahead, lead us off, Miss Jan.
Yes, from our chief, Brady Howard, of our Ladonia Volunteer Fire Department for December of twenty twenty-four. Medical emergencies, there were ten. Structured fires, zero. Grass fires, zero. Motor vehicle accidents, zero. Landing zone, zero. Mutual aid, zero. Lift station assist, zero. Unknown type fire, zero. And smoke investigation, zero. Other, zero. Hazmat, zero. And motor assist, zero. So the total calls of service were ten. And for the month of December, the Ladonia Volunteer Fire Department held one business meeting and one station maintenance night. Their general fund has a thousand twenty-nine ninety-eight, and the truck fund has five thousand two sixty eighty-one. Again, that's from your fire chief, Brady Howard, for the month of December.
Thank you. Moving on to the administration department. You got anything else, Russell?
No, just things that we've been working on. I've been working on the home project, the home grant, and we're down to the final set of paperwork to be sent in. So it should be approved within the next couple of months. I know a lot of people are looking forward to that. I've been researching some different things to try and help with some of the city things so that we can... The permits, we're not allowed to collect a permit fee on contractor permits. So, and there were some recommendations that are covered later in the agenda that were recommended on contractors to protect the city. Been working on getting the budget set up. QuickBooks has not been my friend, but I finally conquered it. I've sent the pump replacement that was done in May of twenty-three in to for a possible rebate from the TXU Green Bucks program. I've been working on the ETJ agreement with the county, and we're working on the stray dog situation. And all the fourth quarter reports for TWC, IRS, sales tax, state criminal fees, and TMRS are done.
Alrighty, thank you. Moving on to Delta Police Department. And from my understanding is we just need to set up a date now to hold interviews for our next... So whenever we can get together here and set up a date for us all to be there to hold interviews for the police chief. I would like that.
Or project manager.
Oh, yeah. Project manager to be determined to be police chief. Whenever y'all are available. How is the twenty-second?
Yes, sir.
What's good to me?
Yes, yes.
As early as four, five, whatever's good for you.
Y'all want to set it up for five?
Sure.
Yeah, I get off at five.
Yeah, so you want to do five-thirty then?
No, I'm just saying, I mean, five fifteen's fine, but I don't get off at five.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty?
Yeah, let's do five-thirty.
Five-thirty's great. I get up at five. Alrighty, I'll start calling applicants tomorrow and get that set up.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to old business, discuss, consider action, purchase of NFA, NFPA, the National Electrical Code, International Plumbing Code, International Zoning Code, and International Building Code, twenty twenty-one edition.
Is that everything, sorry? Is that everything that's listed on this?
Yes.
Purchase, okay.
Yes. Those are the ones that were recommended that would be the, the whole sets, a little over two thousand dollars, closer to twenty-four hundred. This is just the ones that would be pertinent to what we're doing. The copies that we have currently using are twenty fourteen and fifteen, and we need to have more current information.
Weren't some of those discussed about you print them offline?
These you cannot print offline. You have to buy them.
Also, I would appreciate it if there wasn't much talking from the crowd to the council without it being on the citizens' comments. I just want to keep it fair for everybody. It's alrighty.
What rules?
Well, there've been rules the whole time, just never enforced, so... Let's continue discussing this section A here. Do we have someone who wants to make a motion? Or discuss at least?
On item A, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the purchase of the NFPA National Electrical Code, International Plumbing Code, International Zoning Code, and the International Billing Code, twenty twenty-one edition.
All in favor? We move to approve item A, moving to item Bravo. Adopting the NFPS National Electric Code, twenty twenty, International Building Code, twenty twenty-one, and International Plumbing Code, twenty twenty-one, International Zoning Code, twenty twenty-one, and to our city ordinances.
Okay, I'll make a motion adopting NFPS National Electric Code, twenty twenty, International Building Code, twenty twenty-one, International Plumbing Code, twenty twenty-one, and International Zoning Code, twenty twenty-one, to the city ordinances.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving to new business, opportunity to given... That's not mine.
Well, that's mine. Look at that. I keep it on the download.
Opportunity to give an update slash presentation on the progress of Lake Ralph Hall.
Do I need this microphone?
Yeah, please. Yeah, so flip the mute up. If you're going to speak to, okay, yeah, come over here, because we're always just standing in front of the speaker there.
Got you. Well, number one, got a couple of things to talk about tonight that are pretty exciting for us. One of them is that back in August, we approached the city to sign a letter of support for a new trail grant. I'm happy to announce that we were informed just the other day that we were on the agenda for the Texas Parks. It's a Texas Parks and Wildlife, seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. It's a fifty-fifty match, so we also have to put up seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we were going to do that. So we were advised that we were going to be on the agenda coming up on January the twenty-eighth, I believe, for award amongst the many other grants, millions and millions of dollars. But you have to apply for them to get them. And so thankfully, we were awarded, we will be awarded, at least if they approve the agenda. This, I've got a board here showing this is phase one. And this is our headquarters site here, and so this is the new bridge here. And of course, maybe you recognize this is what we call the Keller House, or this is our current headquarters building here. And this is showing kind of a location of, what you see in red here is the trail system that we put the grant in for. And we'll be installing those per the grant, assuming we get the grant. This also shows in this map, and this is just a draft or a concept plan. So don't walk out everything, and this is exactly what's going to happen. This is a concept. And so we have, as a matter of fact, this driveway is already moved. It's up here now, and I'll show you in a minute. So we have a little parking lot here near the highway, near the start of the bridge. So you'll be able to park here and get onto the bridge and go across the trail, across the bridge. And also in our site here along the shoreline, the water's not shown here, but this is kind of going along the shoreline. And this is our new headquarters building. It'd be kind of, you know, I don't know if you're familiar with the site, but there's a pond kind of at the back of it. It'll be near that pond over there is where the new headquarters building will be. And we're still going through, we're going through design right now of that, so things can change quite a bit. But that just gives you a heads up on that. So I just want to say thank you to the city. Those letters are very important when you go in for a grant. And I know it's a simple thing, right, but you got to have it. So you have to show local support for what you're doing, and we thank you for that. I will say I've also made a request here this week. We're actually going to go for a second grant. This is, this will be called Phase Two, and the first grant was for hard trails, and so that would be hard surface trails. The second grant will be for soft trails, and those are more at the back of the property along the shoreline, what you see in red. I think that one is going to be for three hundred thousand, I believe. And so that one's due on February the third, so we're trying to get things moving forward and get that grant in. You can apply for them every year. They do require matching funds. I don't know if that one's a fifty-fifty match. I don't think it is. More like an eighty-twenty. But again, it'll be more funds here. I know that, I heard discussions a while back that Ladonia was looking for a park, and that sort of... Where I live, one of the big things they're working on is a lot of trails. They like trails. I mean, you know, softball fields, soccer fields, those are all great, but most people use trails. They want to walk and jog and that sort of thing, enjoy nature. And these would be great opportunities for folks to do that. So it'll be a, it'll be a great addition to Ladonia. And, you know, the citizens here will be able to enjoy these trails, along with the bridge going across all the way up to, all the way to Bug Tussle, so... Alright, so another item I want to talk about is that you may have noticed that certainly we've got a coffer dam in place for the dam, so we're currently backing up the river, as you can tell. So we put the coffer dam in place so that they can fill in the center part of the dam, because they've got the dam built up to both sides of the river, and they've got the center section where the spillway is going, is. And so they have, they have cut a channel around to route the overflow of water through the new spillway in the dam. And so they have essentially blocked the Sulfur River as of a bit ago. It's been a little bit now. And so now what you're seeing is that water is backing up to a certain elevation. I don't remember the number. I think it was four eighty-five, but don't quote me on that. And so unfortunately, that water backs up a little bit past the entrance to our temporary fossil park. And so I'm hoping that it'll let out a little bit, but it's very slow because it's a small channel, and so the water doesn't get out very quickly. I will say we are in, we do have plans. We are getting very close to getting ready for bids on the new fossil park, which will be down on Highway nine oh four. If you go down there, you'll see a site that's already been cleared. It's open, and it's right by our mitigation area. And so that will be the future location of the relocated fossil park at nine oh four. And we'll provide access down into the river channel at that location below, right where Brushy, is it Brushy? No, it's not Brushy Creek. It's, I just drew a blank, and then the creek comes in right there. I can leave that map. I'm assuming it is. But anyway, we'll be working on that and getting that moving forward post haste. Because we know that the water's backing up past, you know, past the entrance to the old fossil park. So we want to make sure we get that, folks have access to the river channel. We got, so we're making good progress. As you know, we've completed the roads around the lake. We've done the dead ends. We've done, we've closed, of course, twenty-nine ninety. New bridge is in. The bypass fifteen fifty's in, open. We've got one more, one or two more county roads to build. One of them is a thirty-six forty going from Highway thirty-four over to thirty-six thirty-five. That one is yet to be built. And then we're going to be building what we call the Dam Road, which is the dam access road from Highway sixty-four. We're going to prove that county road, which is thirty-six forty-five from Highway sixty-four down to the dam. And it'll ultimately be an asphalt paved road for that. and it'll ultimately be a, uh, an asphalt paved road, uh, for that with a security gate down at the end of it. And I think there's an item later on the agenda related to that road project, there's a item later in the agenda for that one. Again, on the dam itself, we've got, uh, we've got the ends are pretty well, uh, uh, south, north of the main channel, pretty well to, to level, but then the centerpiece, we're out there right now working, uh, I'm not sure if the schedule's changing on, on that, but it's, uh, uh, it's, it's quite a, uh, quite a project, quite a process and a project. Um, one of the thing that, uh, one of the thing I want to bring in, so I had mentioned, uh, I know you've had this map on the wall back here for 20 years, because I think it's since 2004 that map's been over there, so we had, uh, we had a new map made, and, and, uh, Councilman, if you can help me with this, uh, we'll just take this off here, we'll just unwrap it, maybe. Without tearing it up, sure. So this will be, uh, this will be a new map that we'll, uh, we'll have our guys come up and hang it on the wall for you, so you have something to look at. Uh, a little bit more defined than that, uh, this map is, uh, oops, I left the purchase price on. Sorry about that. They're not cheap.
We're not gonna return.
Yeah, not cheap, uh, but it does show, um, it is a, it is a good map to kinda show what's going on and where things are located, what roads go through, what amenities are there. You know, of course, out of Ladonia to 2990, we have a boat ramp plan here at the bottom of the hill, uh, on the north end, 2990, boat ramp plan there. Up at Bugtussel, there's a boat ramp plan there, we have, uh, the fishing jetties there, uh, and of course, our, our headquarters facility is there, and then, of course, down behind the dam, we show the, the pipeline coming out, uh, the raw water pipeline coming out, uh, coming right by the Ladonia Hundred Acre Track here, which we mentioned before, we're gonna put a, a spick it out for your water, your raw water, uh, outtake at that location. Uh, it gives also some water depth here, you can kinda see, darker the blue, the deeper the water, and then you can kinda see this upper end here is gonna be more of the shallow area where you see the water go in and out, more of a, more of a, I don't say marshy, but more of a, a shallow area, of course. One thing, uh, let's see, what's the other thing? Oh, yeah, so, uh, we, uh, you may have read in the, in the papers recently, we, we did award a contract to, uh, Hammett, uh, excavation out of, I think, Dodd City, and they're gonna handle the, uh, clearing, uh, the remainder of the clearing of the lake, so you should, you should see them starting here in the next, pretty quick. I mean, we've already awarded the contract, waiting to get a notice to proceed to them, and so they'll start kinda at Highway 34 going west, probably to about a location here at, uh, so about, about the Pickle Creek right here, this will, from here west will pretty much stay like it is, and there's a little bit of clearing in this area here, so it's kinda from here this way, and we're leaving the tributaries alone, so you have a good place to fish up in those tributaries, and then the west end will be kinda left alone out there as well. But we're gonna try to clear out most of the main water, uh, of the lake. Uh, I don't, I don't know if you've been across the Bodark Lake Bridge, you'll see on one side that they didn't clear it out, they just cleared it like a, you know, place to put the boat. Uh, we're gonna have it pretty well wide open, except in these tributaries, so that you can, you know, get off, get off the main water and do your fishing over there. You can do your duck hunting up in there, and then, uh, out in the middle of the lake, do your normal boating, so, uh, we'll have this mounted, uh, wherever you guys want it, I'm assuming where the other one was, but that was yours too, so you just tell us where you want it, and, uh, we'll, we'll hang it up there. And, uh, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. If not, we'll, uh, I'll sit down and be quiet.
Any questions from the council? No?
No, just want to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you, we thank, we thank, yeah, we do, we, I mean, I should say, we, we value our partnership, uh, with City Ladonia. We wouldn't be here except for you guys asking to be here, and it's been, uh, it's been a good, uh, relationship, and, uh, you know, we strive to, we strive to, uh, make sure we live up to every promise we make, and, uh, I promised the mayor a while back I'd given this map, and mayor, here's that map.
Thank you, thank you. Alrighty. Moving on to section Bravo, adding surety or guarantor to water accounts for rental properties. Um, one of the issues we've seen recently is that, trying to find ways to word this where it makes sense. Um, when somebody rents a home and their tenant comes in, and, yeah, they have to pay a water bill, uh, like a deposit, but we've had this issue where, for example, somebody comes in, they run the water bill up $2,000, and then they leave, and you know, and you can't really expect the, legally, the landlords aren't responsible for that water being run up like that. So the city's just supposed to be out that money, or, I think we need to come up with some sort of way to where we're not just gonna be out that money.
So is there any regard to filing theft of service on the?
I haven't even looked into theft of service.
On the rent, no, not the owner.
Yeah, not on the landlord, obviously.
Yeah, obviously, and, because that's what it is.
Yeah.
They, they do pay a deposit, right?
Uh, you want it in the deposit?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, any, when the renters open their account, they have to pay a deposit, just like everybody else, of $200. Um, but, um, they leave in the middle of the night, nobody knows they're gone until maybe a couple of months later, and they've been being billed for water that there's nobody to pay for it. Uh, I did check with TML and with our attorney, we can, uh, either ask for a guarantor, if they're renting, they have to have somebody that will guarantee their, their bill if they don't pay it, or that they can put up a surety bond. We just need to determine, or y'all need to determine how much you would want that surety bond to be. But one thing to note is, um, I'm staying on top of water bills and not letting them get to that point.
Yes.
Um, if they're not being paid, then they're getting shut off notices, and then water's being shut off before it gets to this point.
And that is a big part in it not happening again, but, um, because I don't wanna, you know, I'm a renter. I don't want to be charged a whole bunch of extra money just for coming in to move into rent somewhere. Uh, I just think we need to sit down and figure out a way to where we're not gonna lose this money again.
So the deposit is two, 200, 200, could we up the deposit from the?
That's something we could do, but I don't.
On the renter?
I really don't want to charge renters a whole bunch of money like that, that's not.
Is this?
Well, it's.
Yeah.
It's refundable.
The big amounts?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it hasn't happened.
Going forward, it won't be, it shouldn't be an issue.
It shouldn't be an issue.
If they get that $200 threshold overdone, right?
That's more like, maybe we put it to where if they do go over $200, it's just cut off like that.
Yeah, I'm curious to know what the process, the surety bond process is, is that something that's pretty simple from our standpoint?
Um, I'd have to do more research, and I think it's just basically that we would, they would have to put up a separate amount, that if they don't pay their bill, then it's gonna be covered by that.
Okay, yeah, basically an insurance policy.
Basically like a second deposit is my understanding. Uh, I did check, and we can charge renters a higher deposit than you do your regular, uh, homeowners, um, but that gets kinda tricky too.
Yeah.
I don't want to do that. I don't want to, um, if we can go about it without charging citizens extra money to move in and rent, I would like to go, I'd like to do it without costing anybody else extra money. I really liked Amy's idea of cutting it off once we get past the, uh, deposit, is just cutting off their water if they have a $200. Obviously, if their bill for the month is over $200, that's not something, but, but if it's outstanding over what the deposit is, I don't think we should continue to allow them to have services.
And could we?
Well, that's policy, I mean, you know, we need to.
Could we put in the new, uh, meter, I mean, the new, our new meters?
Yeah, we're having.
Oh, sorry.
Give me a second, y'all, I have a theory. Maybe if we move this down here, can, like, move this back a little, speak up.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I was asking, because, because the new meters that, um, we had, uh, that we have on order.
Yes, they're on order.
Um, there's a set coming in, if we could get ahold of the rental houses and get those meters put into those rental houses, so that it is an electronic turnoff quicker than someone having to go out and.
That is true.
Manually do it, and to just keep watch on them and shut them off.
I'm not sure if our, the system we're getting has the, the remote shut off. Uh, they'll still have to go out and shut them off.
Then shut it off.
Yes.
That's not gonna take 15 minutes.
15 minutes, yeah.
I mean, that's not.
Yeah, the issue isn't it shutting it off, it's that we've been letting it go for months without, without anybody saying anything, so.
So no action on that one?
Yeah.
Alright, uh, move to table, Adam 9B.
Just to give some background, um, we are not, we cannot, uh, collect a contractor fee when they, uh, register with the city, because they already pay their fees to the state, uh, but I've been speaking to some other, uh, reputable contractors, and they gave a few pointers of things that we should be doing.
Are you talking about?
Um, the, I didn't see.
We still gotta get a second.
I'm sorry, my fault.
We still need someone to second, uh, 9B. Russell, move to, uh.
No action.
Table, yeah.
To table.
No follow-up.
Uh, second.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, now we move on to a nine charge.
Apologies?
No, it is. Go ahead.
As I was saying, uh, we can't charge the application fee, but they did suggest that on the bottom of the fee, there's a section that says, uh, that they, uh, uh, include the city on the certificate of holder on their, uh, insurance, plus, there's been an issue in other areas where one contractor will come in and do the permit, and then somebody else will come in and do the work. So before they do start, start the work, we have to, we can verify that they're actually the person on the permit, and if they're not, we don't let the work proceed. That was a couple of recommendations from some other contractors. It's not really changing the registration, other than no fee, other than how we handle it after we get the registration, to make sure the right people are doing the work.
So is there any action for us to take other than modifying the permit fee on our fee schedule?
That's about it.
So everything else, I think, is an administrative, but the, the mayor can execute?
Yes.
So just want to handle this with a, make a motion to reduce the permit fee, the contractor permit fees to zero?
Yes, we, we can't charge a fee.
Yeah, so that would be electrical, so, I'm sorry, that's not permits, this is, we were doing vendor registrations, right?
This is registrations.
Okay.
And the other piece was the permits, that we make sure that the right people are doing the work. Whoever got the permit is the one actually doing the work, and that's more an administrative thing, not just, everybody needs to be aware of. And that's protect the homeowner as well as the city.
Yeah, so, so where it says can no longer connect a, collect a permit fee, that should say a vendor registration fee, is that what?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
Contractor registration fee.
Okay. But that's only for licensed professionals, is that how?
Yes.
Okay, so are we?
We require that anybody that's doing work in the City of Ladonia has to register. Uh, in the past, we've been charging a $50 fee for those registrations. Uh, we cannot charge that fee, we can still ask them to register with the city in order to be able to do the work, and part of that registration is showing that they have a license for whatever work they're doing, uh, as well as insurance.
Okay.
Yes.
So with that, we would ask that on that insurance that they show us, that the City of Ladonia is listed on the bottom as one of the, uh, holders of the certificate of insurance, uh, in that we verify that the person that did the, the registration, and whoever got the permit, uh, which is a separate thing, is actually the person doing the work.
Okay. Okay, so I, I, I just want to make sure, we don't need to do, so you can change the form, Mr. Mayor, you can change the form that says, here's the checklist of items that we require before registration is allowed, right? They gotta certify that they're gonna be on the permit, they gotta certify that, uh, they've got the insurance, right? And then all we're doing is removing the fee for registration. Okay, so I make a motion that we, uh, amend the city fee schedule to reduce the vendor registration fees to zero. Is that specific enough?
I think so.
Okay, yeah. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to Delta Have Schwank? Schwank?
Schwank.
Schwank?
Schwank.
I thought it was.
I think it's Schwank.
I have Schwank.
Have Maurice Schwank update our city code of ordinances to bring them to current compliance with government codes.
Mr. Mayor, I like this a lot, but I don't see anything in the packet about, uh, estimate or anything else. Do we have any information on estimated costs?
I have a rough, a rough estimate of 6,500 to reduce the, the whole work set of ordinances.
6,500, is that, I don't even know if that's like regular, is that a normal cost for something like this, or is?
It's my understanding it is.
Who is this person?
Yeah.
He's the one who did them back in 95.
Yeah, they're the original ones.
He did the original ones.
I think that we're, I mean, this seems to be one of those things that'd be advisable, at least, to get a second.
Yeah.
Opinion, a second quote.
Yeah.
So if we can find somebody that'll give us a competitive bid, that'd be great. Okay, so I make a motion and we move to table this item until, um, next meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We move to table, move to echo, approve opportunity's proposal to replace existing water line, water line, water line along the east side of County Road 3640 from Farm Market 64, approximately 1,500 feet north of the Fields Water Line. They will install a two-inch line at no cost to the City of Ladonia.
And I have a couple of little bit bigger mats that y'all can look at, there's a, there's a map in your packet, but these are much bigger.
Uh, good catch. Alright, good catch, so, um, obviously, we need to share that with the rest of the council. Um, right here, it says install a two-inch line, while we have recently made the minimum four inches. So, yes, so y'all know on this while we discuss that. Estee should brought that up, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it'd have to be a four inch.
It has to be four inches.
Yes, sir.
We'll, we'll do what the city wants us to do, for sure. We'll, we'll do what the city wants us to do, for sure. Uh, one thing and a couple of corrections in the agenda out in there. It's actually County Road thirty-six forty-five, not thirty-six forty. And then the, the length, the overall length, I think, is about fifteen hundred feet from Highway sixty-four up to Mrs. Fields driveway. That's the last meter that's on that, uh, road right there.
What road is that?
Thirty-six forty-five County Road. It's, uh, the dam road, it's the dam access road. So it's, I think it's the, at the end of your system. Uh, I think Miss Fields is the last, or Mister, I keep saying Mister. Mister and Miss Fields are the last meter on that line, uh, coming from the highway.
The dairy road.
Oh, okay, oh.
Yeah, it's, uh, Mister, it's, uh, Mister Man, it's, uh.
Yeah.
The man dairy.
Man dairy.
Uh, well, it's not, that's not the, that's not the meter we're talking about. The man meter is a diff, coming from another direction. This is coming straight up, this is, uh, coming straight up off of Highway sixty-four. But we'll certainly comply with whatever your requirements are. I would point out that, uh, let me get the engineers to check it out. Because if you put a four-inch line down there, you're, you may have dead water that doesn't get, uh, you're gonna be flushing water to keep it fresh. But let us look at that and, and, uh, I think it's an inch and a half line, either inch or inch and a half line right now. We're happy to put whatever you need to put in. Well, we have no problem with that. But, uh, you also gotta be aware with when you do that, that, uh, you may be, uh, causing yourself some, like, some problems. But let me give the engineers.
Okay.
So they can tell us what, uh, what that means. Because, you know, if you put something in, it's gonna cause you to flush constantly. You're just running water out the end.
Yeah.
Uh, but, you know, that's, uh, to comply with your rules, we'll, we'll do what you require us to do, for sure. We gotta, let us go back and look at that and, uh, get back with you on that, so.
So I think we should wait then.
Sure.
That's what y'all are.
Let's pull that on, sure.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Og.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I make a motion that we table item nine echo.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to section F Fox. City of LaDonia will be joining Fannin County Water Supply Association. Membership fee will be twenty-five cents per water meter area.
Yeah, so I've traded messages with Commissioner Cobb about this. And, uh, his comment was, until we get the supply agency board kind of reconstituted and stood back up again, they're not asking for anybody to pay that membership fee. Um, so they'll let us know, uh, when they're prepared to do that and invoice us.
Okay.
Where's the Fannin County Water Supply at? I mean.
So they meet in, uh, Bonham, at the Darrell Hall facility. Um, we've got a meeting a week from today.
And who does it, who all does it entail?
Um, there's, I'll get you a list of the municipalities that are involved. Uh, but it's, it's most cities and towns in Fannin County.
So they're all doing this?
Yes. Well, but no, nobody's paying it right now.
But they're all joining?
Yes, yeah. The, kinda the context of that is, um, other water supply agencies like, uh, North Texas Municipal Water District are interested in talking to other resources about availability, but they will not negotiate with individual municipalities. It has to be a county-level organization that manages. Oh, thank you. So that's, that's part of the context of what we're talking about here.